Good evening. It is 7:01, I'm Greg Ferris, President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, and hereby call this meeting to order. I certify a quorum is present that the meeting has been posted in time and manner required by law. The monthly meetings are open to the public, although these meetings are open to the public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Again, thank you for joining us tonight. We'll move on to item one, which tonight is our invocation led by Jack Wilkie, Pastor of Forney Church of Christ. Jack, if you can make your way over, as he goes over here, share a little bit about him. He's a minister at the Forney Church of Christ since September 2018. He's married to Allison, and together they are blessed to have two children. Forney Church of Christ has adopted Johnson Elementary as its partner campus. The congregation has supported Johnson and our district through various partnerships and projects as volunteers. We're thankful to have Pastor Wilkie, and the Forney Church of Christ is a member of our Forney family. Would you please rise with me?
Please join me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, I want to start first of all by giving thanks to you for so many blessings we enjoy, thankful for this board, for Dr. Terry, for their oversight of this school district. We pray your blessings on them as they conduct this meeting and as they conduct the business, and again, the oversight of this district with all involved. We're thankful for their guidance, especially through these last two years. As we come to the end of another calendar year, you've brought us through so much. We're so thankful for those blessings, but we pray your comfort on all those who have lost much in this time as well. We're thankful for this city of Forney, for Texas, for the United States, for the blessings we receive as citizens of each of them. You blessed us so richly, we have so much to give you thanks for, and we pray that you give us all hearts filled with gratitude. I pray right now over this meeting that you would bless each one here, bless those making decisions, help them to have wisdom, give them vision over what needs to be done, and how best to bless the citizens, especially the children of this city of Forney. Father, we pray for everyone involved in this education system, for the administrators, for the teachers, for the children, for the parents, for all those, Father, who play some role in putting this program together of these schools. We pray for, again, especially the children, most of all. We pray that they would grow with the knowledge that they need to be good serving citizens of our community as they grow, that we would all have unity with one another, that we would each be a blessing and a servant to one another, that they would learn that way, that we would set that example for them, and that they would learn those values and those skills that they need as they go through this school system. We pray once again over this meeting that you would give wisdom to each one involved, bless each as they go from here tonight with safety. Help us again as we navigate this unprecedented time of the last couple of years, and with the schools, that they would continue to find ways, continue to make a difference in the lives of so many. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Moving on to item B is our Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Pam Luttrell, Principal of Forney Learning Academy, and she'll introduce our Secondary Student of the Month. Following that, Mrs. Courtney Parker, Principal of Blackburn Elementary, to introduce our Elementary Students of the Month. Good morning.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Terry. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I think my student's stuck in traffic. You know the Forney traffic. So, I wanted to introduce to you a student named Deja Johnson. Deja is seventeen years old and is a student in our Connect Program at FLA. As Forney's grown, FLA's grown, and we house five programs now. Deja has nine brothers and sisters, three are at North Forney and one at Brown Middle School. Deja intends to attend college after high school and is interested in serving as a medical assistant in the Army. She is an outstanding young lady with a wonderful attitude and smile. We count on her to help us. We have her multi-grade level programs in our campus. We count on her. She is a library aide and works in PE and reading with younger students. So, I'm sorry you don't get to meet Deja tonight. She's a lovely young lady.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Terry. The Advanced Academics and Fine Arts Academy at Blackburn is delighted to honor Kendra Witten as our Student of the Month. Kendra is a fourth grader. She has two siblings, Kenya Witten, who's at North Forney, and Keelis Witten at Brown Middle School. Kendra moved to Blackburn last year, and in the short time she's been there, she's made a huge impact. Kendra is a phenomenal young lady with outstanding character. Kendra's fourth grade teachers love her infectious smile and note that she's always kind to everyone, works hard and is helpful to others. She's responsible and very respectful to her classmates and teachers. Kendra's peers know her as a reliable and trustworthy friend that is kind and respectful to everyone. She's the first to notice when another student doesn't have a friend or someone to play with at recess, and she quickly befriends them. Despite any challenges she may face, Kendra doesn't stop trying and always works to her full potential. This year Kendra has learned to advocate for herself, which makes her teachers proud. Kendra would like to be an artist when she grows up. Her diligence to work hard and willingness to overcome obstacles will ensure that she meets the goal. Having such a dedicated, wonderful student like Kendra has been a tremendous blessing. Kendra is a wonderful young lady, a dedicated student, and an awesome role model that we're fortunate to have at the Advanced Academics and Fine Arts Academy of Blackburn.
Do it rise for the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Moving on to item four, acceptance of donations. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Justin Ethely, the Forney Education Foundation Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Distinguished Board members and Dr. Terry, I'm here this evening representing the Forney Education Foundation, and I have some great news to share with you. The Forney Education Foundation's purpose is to positively impact Forney ISD students and teachers. One way we accomplish this is through our Innovative Teaching Grant Program. The foundation created the Innovative Teaching Grant Program that recognizes and supports innovative, creative instructional programs to positively impact our students at Forney ISD. This is an annual opportunity for teachers to submit a grant request, seeking additional funding, and is a competitive process, with applications being reviewed by campus principals, department managers, Forney ISD administrators, and the Foundation Grants Committee. I'm happy to announce this year will mark a milestone for the foundation as we surpassed $1 million funding in innovative teaching grants since 2008. This would not be possible without the amazing support of the foundation's Board of Directors, the foundation's Grant Committee, collaboration with Forney ISD leadership, and the Forney community for its continual support through the Adopt a Grant Program. I would like to thank the following groups and individuals for this year's additional funding of the teaching grants. Atmos Energy, Trinity Valley Electric Cooperative Charitable Foundation, Walmart, Claybon PTO, Henderson PTO, Warren PTO, and Norma Rain. Finally, I hope you will accept this year's total amount of $69,695.04 as a donation to our award recipients.
Thank you, Mr. Ethely. I do need to have a motion from the board to accept this donation. Mr. Johnson, one second. Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any here and not, thank you very much. Would you like to bounce your board members up for a picture? We do want to thank all those people who worked tirelessly to raise funds to help our students, so thank you very much. Move on now to recognitions, or number five. This time, Ms. Kristen Zaspol. She'll start our student recognitions.
Good evening. I am going to share a video with you, and then we are going to reveal our third Annual Holiday Card Contest winners. So, this evening, as I call up our winners from tonight, we also have your framed cards, and we have a set of cards for your family as well. So, if I could have Jude Rincon, our pre-K through fourth grade winner, third grader at Criswell, on up. And I don't know, is his teacher here tonight? Is that Mrs. McQueen? Yes, come on up to you. And then we'll take one big group picture at the end. We'll have our fifth grade winner, Jordan Casberg, our eighth grade at Warren. Ms. Cora's is here, our teacher. Ninth through twelfth grade winner was Mia Escalera, who's at tenth grade at Forney High School. And our overall winner, Kaylee Cotton Game, tenth grade, Forney High School. And I believe Mrs. Bransky is here with them as well.
Next is our PSAT Committed Scholars. Dr. Judy Weber, Chief of Learning Services.
Mr. Ferris and Dr. Terry, School Board members, it's always an honor to recognize some of our students each year. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for the recognition and scholarship. It began back in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Of the 1.6 million entrants, approximately 50,000 are the top 3%, with the highest scores qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. In September, these high scores were notified through their schools that they qualified as a commended scholar in recognition of their outstanding academic promise. Two students qualify tonight from Forney ISD. We have Emma Stoy. And Luke Hurd. These are our National Merits Commended Scholars, representing Forney High School. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item, Texas Thespian State Festival and Contest. Recognition to be by Ms. Glanton.
Good evening. The FISD Fine Arts Department is proud to share the recent accomplishments of our high school thespians. Our high school theater students recently competed in the Texas Thespian State Festival and Thespie Contest, or the Educational Theater Association's Thespian Excellence Awards. Texas Thespians is an affiliate of the Educational Theater Association and includes numerous branches which offer multiple opportunities to Texas Thespian educators and middle school and high school students throughout the state. Students may enter various Thespie Excellence Award competitions at the Texas Thespian State Festival in areas such as solo musical, group musical, duet acting, stage management, lighting design, and much more. 3,352 individual events were submitted statewide at the Texas Thespian Festival and Contest 2021. We are delighted to share that our FISD thespians received the following honors at the Texas Thespian State Festival and Thespie Contest. Superior awards are the highest honors given, and qualify these students to attend the national competition should they wish to attend. Rick Dominguez and Jay Stevens from North Forney High School, duet acting. Jeffrey Miller, solo musical, North Forney High School. Jay Lee Weiser, solo musical, North Forney High School. Emma Wilson, solo musical, North Forney High School. Allison Begin and Sidney Prescott, duet musical, North Forney High School. Angel Ramirez and Erin Rosales, duet musical, Forney High School. Sadie Moss, stage management, Forney High School. These students have received a superior pin from Texas Thespians, feedback from a panel of judges, and are qualified to perform again at the Educational Theater Association's National Conference should they wish to attend. We would also like to recognize North Forney High School Theater for their technical awards in the Texas Thespian State Festival and Contest Tech Challenge Event. Best Overall Tech Challenge Team Winner, that's first place in the state, North Forney High School Theater. Tech Challenge Individual Team Winners for the Fold a Drop Contest, Travis Spear, Rick Dominguez, George Stevens, Stevens and Marielle Lemay. Tech Challenge Individual Winner in the Sound Setup Contest, Travis Spear and Rick Dominguez. Congratulations. We are extremely proud of your hard work and dedication to your theatrical craft and education. Congratulations. And would our North Forney and Forney High School Theater Directors come join in the picture, please? Congratulations.
Now, we're moving on to Staff Recognitions. Moving on to Staff Recognitions, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mario Lerner, our Director of Fine Arts.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry. We do want to recognize Ms. Glanton up here. So, if she will step forward, she has no clue what's going on, as you can tell. So, at the same festival that happened about two weeks ago, one adult was selected for an award, and so happens to be inside here too.
The students are coming back in just a second.
Okay. We will stall a second here. So, at the same event about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, one adult was selected to be the Trailblazer Award. And what that is, is an innovator, a visionary for the organization. This educator is setting new ground and standards for educational theater in one or more theatrical aspects. She serves on the board with Texas Thespians, and this is the award that she got two weeks ago that just happens to be up here, that I just took from her desk, so. So, congratulations, Ms. Glanton.
That concludes our recognitions. We'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you all. One-minute warning. Thank you all for being here again tonight. We're going to move on with item number seven, Reports. The next three items, reports only, require no action from the board. This time, I'll call Mr. John Chase, Chief Financial Officer, to give our monthly financial report.
Is it on now? All right, check. Tonight, we're here to talk about the monthly financial report for the period ending October 2021. Just to start with, with the general fund, we had year-to-date revenue collected of $31.2 million. This is 24% of the amount estimated, and for prior year comparative purposes, we were at 22% at this second point in time last year, so tracked along very fairly in general fund revenue. So, moving on to the expenditures, year-to-date expenses was $45.3 million, or 32% of the amount appropriated, and we were exactly at the same percent expended last year at the same point in time, so would be expected to track along really nicely here in the general fund. Moving on to food service, year-to-date revenue collected was $749,000. Would point out in that second bullet that we had the September and October federal reimbursements for our free lunch program. We haven't received them. We got those in November, so there's about another $1,003,000 that we'd have collected in pretty short order after the month of October. And we also had all of our sales through the month of October, including August, September, and October, $348,000, as I pointed out last month. That's a September, and October, 348,000. As I pointed out last month, that's, you know, everything in addition to our free lunch program, so chips and snacks and things of that nature, pizza and things of that nature that we just sell as one-off items that we had, you know, we had $348,000 through October. Just looking at the prior year comparison, we had 10% collected at this point. As you know, we were in a COVID year last year, so our numbers were down significantly, so it's not really a surprise. We're tracking along really nicely as far as revenue goes. I fully expect that we'll probably be over $6 million in revenue collected at year-end, and I think we only budgeted about 5.5 or so million. So, we'll definitely collect over what we had projected. And we may have to amend our expenses because of that to increase our food budget accordingly. Moving on to food service expenditures, we had 1.6 million expended through October, and that represents 30% of the amount appropriated. We did serve 110,000 meals for the month. This was a month that we had one week off, so it wasn't the full four weeks in a normal month. But when you break it down, as far as how many kids actually participated for the month, it's about 50%. And I think that's about where I reported to you last month as well. So, when you compare this to our expenses, where we were at the same point in time last year, we were about 20% expended, and again, we were in a COVID year last year, so our participation was way down. But we're tracking along pretty well in the food service program. Everything's looking pretty good, especially with our free lunch program. Last, as far as debt service, year-to-date collections is 350,000. It's not a real heavy collections. First July, August, September, October, we don't really start picking up good tax collections until November, December, so pretty light so far. So, it's 1% of the amount estimated. And again, last year, we were at 1% as well. And then finally, on the expense side of things, we did have our August debt service payments, but nothing after that. We were at 20.9 million expended, which is about 69% of the total appropriation. And last year, we were sitting at about 73% expended. So, that's the food total financial report for the period ending in October. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Moving on to item B, a Demographer Update. Ms. Kim, where's that?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Board. I'm actually going to invite Michelle Box up from Zonda Demographics. She's just going to give you a brief overview of what we discussed earlier in the Board Workshop regarding our current Quarter Three Demographer update. Michelle?
Thank you so much. I always get so excited when I come in and I see a big crowd, and then I realize they're not here for me. So, that's fair, though. I mean, this is a lot of numbers. Like I said, just running through the brief third quarter report. So, first and foremost, third quarter had another big surge in starts. So, right now, the district is sitting fourth in DFW, ranked out of school districts based on annual closings. So, we have about 3,300 district-wide new home starts in the last 12 months, and about 2,500 annual closings. Just for some perspective, Northwest ISD is closing about 3,300 homes. So, that's kind of where you're sitting at your starts. Your enrollment projections are going to be based off of about 3,300 to 3,500 annual closings for the 2022 school year. So, Northwest is doing that right now. They're 250 square miles, 54 active subdivisions, compared to your 80 square miles with 23 active subdivisions. So, you should be proud. You've got some big producers going. Inventory homes, about 1,900 homes in inventory. That includes model homes, finished vacant, and under construction. So, that's really the pipeline for basically the next six months. VDL or vacant developed lots. Those are lots that have streets in, utilities in, they're ready to put a home on tomorrow. We have about 2,200 lots. That is less than 12 months of supply. We do want to see that VDL continue to tick up. That's something we are watching closely. We have about 4,000 lots in development right now. So, we need those to continue to deliver in order for us to maintain this 1,000 starts-a-quarter pace that we're doing right now. But 28,000 future lots additionally planned across the district, all in various states, all in various states of development. Some, like I said, are groundwork underway. Some are just still fields that are still planning or plating. So, we do track your activity at the quarterly level. So, in the third quarter of '21, we had about 1,100 new home starts, 1,000 in the second quarter. So, just in the last two quarters, we've started more homes than we did all of 2020. That is the kind of rapid appreciation we're seeing here in your housing market, basically doubling in just a year at the quarterly level. In closings, we had another quarter of 700 new home closings, compared that to about 380 just a year ago. So, again, basically doubling year-over-year, really fast increase in this housing market. And like I mentioned, you have the lots in planning and plating to continue this pace for the foreseeable future. We do track your new students, newcomers and leavers. So, newcomers are pure first-through-12th-grade growth. We exclude EE, pre-K, and kindergarten students. And leavers, we exclude any of last year's 12th-grade students. We assume all of those graduate. So, basically, we had a net growth of about 1,200 kids this year. So, 2,700 newcomers and 1,500 leavers. We're always going to have leavers. I know everyone always gets concerned about seeing that number. That's just the mobility between years and districts. And you will see that that lever does tick up slightly in the last couple of years. That's purely due to population size. Anytime we're adding more students than we're losing, that's obviously a good thing. We're growing quickly. So, you can see that really strong jump in that net growth there, especially compared to 2020. Obviously, 2020 did have a small COVID impact for you guys. We would have expected that to be a net probably 800 last year without the pandemic. So, a small impact felt. So, that does then pent up that newcomer number for this year. So, that leads us to our 10-year forecast by grade. As mentioned, this forecast is predicated on you building about 3,300 to 3,500 homes in the next 12 months. If you do that, you could add 2,400 students next fall for a 2022 enrollment of about 16,700 students. The next five years, if you maintain that 3,000 homes a year roughly, a market adding about 15,000 homes, with your current student yields, you should be able to add about 11,000 students for about 25,000 students total enrollment district-wide in 2026. In the next 10 years, if we can maintain that pace for 10 years, to be clear, that's ambitious. But if we can maintain that kind of 30,000 homes in the next 10 years, you could be looking at about 20,000 students of growth in the next 10 years for a 2030 enrollment of about 35,000 students. That five-year number is really what we need to focus on. That 10-year number just looks scary. We need to plan and prepare for that five-year. So, this forecast is based off your current student boundaries. I understand we are in the process of working on those boundaries right now. So, if we didn't make any of those changes, why do we need to make those changes? That's kind of how I should word it. You can show them this slide. Because without any boundary moves, Henderson Elementary is expected to be over 900 students next fall. Griffin Elementary is expected to enroll about 1,000. Griffin is right now your fastest-growing elementary zone, adding the most homes, building about 1,000 homes a year right now. By 2024, we're seeing several campuses over 1,000 students. We can expect you to add about 1,000 students this fall and maintain a pace of about 800 students, elementary students a year for basically the next five years. At the secondary level, we're expecting you to add about 300 intermediate and middle school students this coming school year, and expect you by about 2024, 2025 to be basically over capacity at your intermediate and middle school campuses. In high school, North Fornie High School is projected to be over 3,300 students by 2023. Total high school enrollment surpassing about 7,000 by about 2025. So, again, keeping that basically kind of 24,000, 25,000 student number in mind is really going to be important for planning the next two to three years. I understand that these forecasts are increasing rapidly, and I know that's scary to see, but the housing market is also increasing rapidly. So, the important thing is that we're aware of it, we're staying on top of it, and we just need to take it one year and one day at a time. Be happy to answer any questions. These are just a few key takeaways. Again, about 16,700 students next year. In the middle, we're reworking those boundaries to make sure that we have a place to put all those kiddos coming in. So, we have 1,900 inventory homes in the pipeline. The current start rates are not sustainable with the lots available on the ground at this time, but we do expect you to be able to close basically 3,000 to 3,500 homes in the next 12 months. Can I answer any questions or provide any other data for you?
Any other questions, Board?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did have this last build-out comparison. We did discuss a build-out. I did want to show you, again, for context, we polled some comparably-sized districts. Your district's about 80 square miles. So, we polled a few districts to look at for comparisons and what a potential build-out scenario could look like. Again, when we're throwing, you know, 20,000 students of growth in 10 years, I'm sure you want to know when it's going to stop. So, this tends to lean to this peak enrollment. Typically, districts that are more at a built-out stage of their lifecycle tend to have peak enrollments, and then the enrollment will kind of fluctuate around there depending on class sizes and regeneration. So, Arlington tends to be a little bit more dense than I would say you guys are, but for comparison's sake, they peaked at about 65,000 students. Klein ISD down in Houston is about 54,000 students, and Keller ISD is about 35,000 students, a little bit smaller than you guys, but a similar kind of suburban mixed-density district. I apologize. Now, can I have any questions or any other thoughts? Thank you so much.
Mr. Ferris, if you don't mind, just a couple of comments. I think, before we see this exponential growth, that we've been experiencing fast growth. I think it has now moved into exponential fast growth. When we're looking at, in the next three years, tipping 20,000 students, five years, 25,000 students, and in 10 years, over 35,000 students, we're looking to double. According to these projections, in the next six to seven years, and add over 2,400 students in the next year alone. So, obviously, there's a lot to discuss. I think some of the items later on throughout the agenda will give a little more pathway or direction as to what we will do with the current seats that we have authority over. But we're definitely going to have to start having a discussion about the next steps and what's coming soon with this growth. So, Michelle, just thank you for your work. Kim, thank you for your work. And then, Board, if there's any questions we can answer now, be happy to do so. But if not, well, I'm sure there may be some down the road.
Thank you, Michelle. So, Ms. Morzak, let's move on, then. What does this mean for Master Planning Update?
Thank you for that awesome segue, Mr. Ferris. Obviously, we'll kind of refer back to Michelle's report throughout the night. I did have locations of that expedited growth that we're going to see. Talked to Jeff, and I decided I'm going to do the Gallagher update this week. Actually, visited all the sites on Friday, and I've probably seen them since he has. So, Willet and Johnson are pretty, running pretty parallel. Willet's a little head of Johnson in some areas. Johnson's a little head of Willet. They're fighting over the storm shelter right now, and Johnson won. All the precast panels are up, the floor's poured, double Ts are in. Shelter's looking really good over at Johnson. He saw some pour some second-floor concrete, but the ICF is done. The brick is down on the first 1A section. It's bricked. Still erection's ongoing, moving along really well. Willet is just a little bit further on the exterior. The brick is looking really good. He had not poured his floor in his storm shelter yet, but the precast panels are up, double Ts are in. That was scheduled to be this week. So, he's about done pouring concrete. Was pouring some of the roof last week. So, real close to completing concrete pours over at Willet. He actually has sheet rock onsite, I think, this week, and will start rocking Section 1A. So, getting close to getting the roof completed up there and windows in, be in the dry sooner than later at this point. So, they're doing a really good job. Those are coming along really nicely. Whole lot faster. I keep saying that. It's just amazing to me how much faster these are going on this second round. And a lot of that's with the help of Huckabee making a few tweaks and changes, but they're looking really good. Stairs are in. I walked the principal, actually, through Willet last Friday. You could tell where the school building is, so looking really good. North Fornie, concrete's poured over in the little baseball softball area. Turf will be going in soon. The canopies are completed on baseball. They've started them on softball. They had a little concrete pour they did last week, so I think concrete's pretty much done there. The fields are both completely turfed. They're going to do some refresh, replace the foul ball nets in the back, and do some painting and updating to make those two fields pretty much the same on both sides. As far as the fieldhouse goes, it's almost in the dry. I think they had a couple of windows left to get in. The track is the new, I think the curb is in. They had a big concrete pour last week. So, that's all moving along. Everything's running along on schedule, looking really good over there. I think they started painting this week. So, Fornie High School, we actually were supposed to punch this week, but last week we had a little issue, so we're punching this week on Friday, and then that will be real close to being turned over. There's a couple of little details we're waiting on, just from some shipping delays. We're in a really hard time getting signs, just from everyone. So, the two Falcon signs that go on the press boxes aren't in yet, but for the most part, it looks really good. I think we're waiting on one tree on the landscaping, but it's mostly in. It's going to be beautiful. Looks really good. So, we'll punch that this week, and then it'll be ready to turn over. Aquatic Center, the Mirtha panels are in. The grade beams are poured. You can see they're formed up in that top picture. Those have been poured for the enclosure. That's the word I'm looking for. The stairs got put in for the aerobics and swimming area on that side. Plumbing's in. It's just coming along. You can tell it's a pool now, whenever you drive by and look at it. Doesn't just look like a big hole anymore. So, that's kind of the update on all the current projects that are on the ground right now. What I want to talk about just for a second is kind of where we are on our most immediate needs based on what Michelle shared earlier. So, as you know, Opportunity Central breaks ground in January. We're going to share a little bit more with you a little bit later. Jeff will present the bids during action, and we'll get going on the OC. That's going to open in the fall of '23. The expansions to Fornie High School and North Fornie with an anticipated opening of 2023. With the new numbers, we know that these have got to go as quickly as possible. And I'm going to show you a few master plans here in a second, and then we'll take action on those later this evening as well. Elementary Number 10 is another one that we got to get on the ground as soon as we can. The expansion to the North Transportation Lot, remember, that's been approved for design. The intermediate core facility expansions, that design has been approved, and the Brown Middle School expansion. So, this is Elementary 10. This is over, as you can see, Falcon Way. 548's over on the left side of the page, just slightly off of you. I'm going to show you a master plan site here in just one second. Whenever you look at this, it kind of looks like that traffic's going to come in on Falcon Way, but if you'll bear with me, I'll show you that entrance in just a second. This is just to show you the site fit on that property. This is the full master plan site at North Fornie, and I'm going to kind of go from left to right. So, if you look down there on the bottom left, that's that new Elementary 10 site. On the plan north of this, you'll see a road coming off of 548. That will actually be the parent loop. And as you can see, we have a lot of real estate there that comes around and provides a huge amount of stacking to get everybody off and pull all the traffic away, kind of from Smith and North Fornie. We did have an exit out onto Falcon Way, and then the bus traffic will be on Falcon Way. That's an emergency exit. It won't be used for pickup and drop-off. All that traffic will be pushed out to 548. That kind of loops around on that master plan over in front of the Ag Barn, and then I'm going to continue over to the North Fornie master plan. You'll see a couple of boxes on there. One is an athletic expansion, and one's a ninth-grade expansion. And then, on the very top, very top of the building, that's that, very top of the page, excuse me, on the top right corner, you'll see a yellow box, and that is the expansion to the Transportation Center. So, what we're looking at at North Fornie is adding a ninth-grade expansion building that will be connected back into the main building. It has core space in it, as well as academic space to house the entire ninth-grade population. There'll also be a little bit of fine arts expansion, some athletic expansion. So, we're really focusing on core expansion at these facilities. And remember, that's to get us up to 3,200 students. Very similar approach at Fornie High School. This is now Fornie High. You see the new baseball softball fields that I just told you will be turning over next month, probably. It also has a ninth-grade expansion that ties back into the building, some core expansion cafeteria. We added a little bit to the cafeteria at North, and so this would be an opportunity to expand the cafeteria at Fornie High School. A little bit of fine arts expansion, a little bit of athletic expansion. On the bottom right, you see the big green square. That ninth-grade addition, that's the yellow square there, is sitting on top of what are the existing tennis courts. So, in order for that to happen, we'll have to move the tennis courts first, and very quickly, up to the front on this side of the welding building, and then we'll start that addition. I know we got to get those courts in for our tennis kids before we start any demolition. So, that's Fornie High and North Fornie. Brown Middle School, we have a couple options there, but this is a little addition here, just an expansion. There's some core that needs to be expanded at Brown, and so a little bit of fine arts expansion there. This is Smith. We've talked about this. This design has been a This is Smith. We've talked about this. This design has been approved. That's at a second gym. We have a great, Smith's design is great. Smith and Ray, they're identical designs. Their core is great. Their classroom count is great. We're just missing a gym. And so this would allow us to have a full twelve hundred at Smith. This is Ray. That addition can't fit in the same place at Ray. We just don't have any more room over there. You got to get the fire lane out around the building. So it's actually flipped over to the other side, a little addition at Ray. So that is kind of what we're looking at for immediate needs and things we got to get on the ground as soon as we possibly can to help manage this growth. And that's the end of the master planning update. Not any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Any other comments? Dr. Terry?
Yeah, just a couple. Just if you'll go back to the site plan for Elementary 10, just to point out one other thing that I think we have been discussing is you'll notice that we did redesign a little bit of the approach on where the Elementary 10 is. That stacked its base, obviously, that Ms. Morzak shared with you was a huge driver in that. But also, as we've had more discussions with the county, if you look to the north of the elementary school, you'll see the KCAS county facility. So we're working with them to have a nice presence there for the KCAS group for all the schools in that location. As well, I would like to point out over at Brown and Ray and Smith, as we begin to add some of these facilities that really finish out the build-out, each of these will be tornado shelters. And so as we begin to pick up some of these additional facilities or expansions, as you recall, most of those expandable expansions that we've added to some of our elementaries have included that. So you'll see a common trait of installing tornado shelters in these facilities as well. So just wanted to point out a couple of the things. I think you've started to see through the last meeting that plans are beginning to develop. I think that we're getting a little more detail every time we come back to you. But any feedback that you do have, we'd love to hear moving forward. So that's really all I had. We happy to answer any questions at the board.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Those expansions at Forney High School and North Forney are tornado shelters as well. So any addition that we do is required by law to add a tornado shelter at this point, and it has to house the entire student body, so.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Moving on to item eight, public forum. We have no one signed up for that. We'll move on to item nine, consent agenda. Nine A is approved minutes from November eighth, board workshop. Nine B is approved minutes from the November eighth board meeting. Nine C approved minutes from November eighteenth, public hearing. Nine D approved the budget amendments. Nine E approved the FDB local update. Nine F approved the resolution to prevailing wage rates for public work projects. Nine G approved the superintendent authority to make emergency purchases to repair electrical systems at Forney High School. Nine H approved the purchases at FFE for athletic expansions. We could do these collectively or separately. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approved the construction of the students and I agree with the board.
Ms. Greens made a motion collectively for nine A through eight. She'll have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to number 10, consideration possible approval of attendance boundary modification. This time, turn back over to Ms. Morzak.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I just have one slide here today, and that is the plane that you guys saw. You've seen it a couple of times now. You saw it as in the workshop and this, as well as the last board meeting. We have not received very much feedback from this, as you know. We had a few people fill out the form. We had two people show up to the public meeting that we did, and we didn't have anyone speak at the public hearing. There is one neighborhood that the board brought to us to look at, and that was a little area that is currently zoned for Johnson that we have moving back to Clayton, and that is Skyline Estates. And there was some suggestion that we look at possibly honoring some transfers there. Mr. Geer will be able to handle that through admin regs, so there's no, nothing that the board needs to take action on. But we have heard your request to look at those and to take those into consideration that if anyone would like to stay at Johnson from that feeder pattern. They've been moved a couple of times, and so we'll look at that through our normal transfer process. Don't think there's been any other questions that I'm aware of, but I'll take any questions that the board has at this time. But otherwise, we ask that you accept this draft plan as the new attendance zone for elementary for the 22-23 school year.
Dr. Terry, any comments?
No, just appreciate the work of our team. Again, you know, we didn't have a lot of, people show up to give feedback, but that's, again, I'd like to give credit to Mr. Geer and Ms. Estable for a lot of phone calls and answering questions and working our parents through change with these attendance zones suggestions. So with that, I would just recommend that we do approve the 22-23 elementary attendance zone boundaries for the upcoming school year.
Board, you've heard the recommendation. Any questions? Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on then to number 11, consideration possible approval of construction bids. Ms. Morzak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'm actually going to ask Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction to come up. There are two, two different sets of, two project bids we're asking you to approve tonight. One is a not-to-seed bid for campus makers that we asked for superintendent authority for. And then the other one, the larger one, is Package One for those seed. I'm going to let Mr. Fisher talk you through that.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Good evening, President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board. Good to be with you again. As I'm sure you're aware, we took proposals on the Package One of the OC project on the eighteenth of November. That package included the site work that's required for the OC, so that's the underground utilities, the dirtwork and paving, as well as some of the building components of the project, the structural concrete, the structural steel, masonry, roofing, and wall panels. The site also included the site electrical, so that's the parking lot lighting and the main electrical feed coming in. So we received very good coverage on the bids, multiple bids in all the trades. So obviously, we're real happy about that. Very competitive bids, and numbers came in just slightly better than we were expecting from an estimate standpoint, so we were happy with that as well. I hope that carries into Package Two as well, but that's yet to be seen. So at this time, we're just recommending approval of the bids as presented in the memo, as well as alternates one, two, three, four, and six. Alternate one is some additional parking lots. The reason we're asking for approval of those right now is because we're not sure when the bids come in in Package Two, whether they'll be able to be done or not. But they need to be in the project and taken out later, as opposed to, opposite of that. Number two was actually a credit that was to use wide flange beams instead of joists. So delivery date actually is better on the wide flange beam, so that works out better for us on that. Alternate three was the additional classrooms at the early childhood center. Again, similar to alternate one, we're recommending approval of that in this package. And depending on how the bids come in on Package Two, then the board can decide fully on that one if we need to take it back out at that time from these contractors we can. Alternate four was really one that we just took as a breakout price for some rigging. And then alternate six was to use a different metal panel on the outside of the building that ended up being a little bit of a credit. So we recommend approval of the base proposal and those alternates. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, comments?
Just appreciate Gallagher's work. I mean, we are going to come to you continuously with a lot of alternates, and that's very intentional, and I've just got to commend them for the time and effort they put in. Along with Huckabee, that takes a lot of extra effort on their part. But the way that they're structuring these and really looking at things with multiple alternates is really helping, I think, the bid process and the pricing that we're receiving. Just as a reminder, by the approach we've been taking, we're actually able to absorb things like Elementary number 10 into the bond package because of the under-budget cost savings that we're receiving. So as of tonight, excited to hear these bids. I know with the inflationary setting that we're all in, it's great to see that you're under budget, Jeff. So thank you for that, and recommend that you approve the bids as presented.
Thank you all. Board, you've heard the recommendations. So I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the construction bid as presented.
Mr. Andrews made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 12, consideration possible approval of master plan. Ms. Morzak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you know, we need to get those high school expansions done as quickly as possible. Those will be done over several, over several months, kind of done in chunks as we can get supplies in and get those started. But we ask that you approve the budget as presented for the expansions to Forney High School and North Forney for core expansions, athletic expansions, fine arts expansions, and then the ninth grade centers.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Terry, do you have any further information?
Now, I think Ms. Morzak did a good job of sharing what this looks like for us from a master plan perspective. Tonight, we're asking for an overall approval of the project budget. Again, this will be a couple-year process to get these all taken care of. A lot of these, this master plan was the foresight of previous boards, and just wanted to commend them, very similar to what we're seeing with the baseball and softball complex at Forney High School. A lot of this was pre-engineered, pre-designed to get us to the point where we can begin to expand out. So excited about what this looks like for us. And as she said, we can't get high school seats quick enough right now. As you saw, seven hundred new students in high school alone will be joining us next year. So recommend approval of the North Forney and Forney High School master plans and the budgets set as well.
Board, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the high school master plan and ask for the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second? Ms. Dobbs? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 13, consideration possible approval to convene the facilities planning committee. Dr. Terry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you saw, we are booming with growth. And I just say it's because everybody wants to come be a part of this Forney family. And it's about the job, great job our teachers are doing in classrooms and you as leaders of the board. With that is a lot of a challenge, but also a lot of blessing. And that's how we choose to look at it. However, we are needing to stop and take a look because of this fast growth. We've done a good job of managing that, and with this new uptick, I think we are getting to the point where looking at additional chairs is something we need to have a committee to examine. And so we had this process in place about two and a half years ago in the spring of 2019, and that committee did a great job to put together a recommendation that's got us to this point. And so what we'd recommend tonight is that we approve convening of a new facilities committee. Some that would be some experienced members, some core members, but also some new members. And Mr. Ferris, we'd ask that you would appoint as well some board participation as an advisory committee according to board policy. So recommend tonight that you would approve the convening of a facilities committee to begin in the next school, in the new year. Let's just call it the new year.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Any questions from the board? You're not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to convene the facility planning committee as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second? I think I heard Mr. Johnson first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. As board members, we are, do get to participate in several of these. So I'd like to ask Mr. Christopher Andrews and Mr. Chad Johnson to serve as our board members as part of that group. Ms. Tier, you'll add that to your notes. And board members, if you have any recommendations for people to possibly serve, if you would email those names to Ms. Tier, she'll collect those for us. Moving on to item 14, consideration possible approval to convene a financial audit advisory committee. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As we've discussed over the last few months, it is time to take a look. The board has a precedent in place to look to explore new audit firms every five years financially. And we have hit that mark and have put out a request for qualifications and do have some interest for different firms. So we would ask that the board convene an advisory committee to help interview those applicants and make recommendation to the board for a new financial audit company.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Any questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Ferris, I make a motion to convene a financial audit advisory committee as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. And board members, I'd like to ask to serve and assist at that meeting as Ms. Dobbs and Mr. Reckett. Ms. Tier, if you'll get those, and I appreciate that. Moving on to item 15, consideration possible approval for the 23-24 school calendar as a first reading. Ms. Morzak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Feel like I've been up here a lot today. So I'm actually bringing back the next year's calendar, which is the 22-23 calendar, because in the process of doing the 23-24 calendar, we made a few changes. Once the board approves a calendar, the superintendent actually has the ability to make slight changes to it without board approval. But we wanted to just be transparent with you guys and let you know what we're looking at doing. We propose two, I think this is a, I think I have an error on this calendar as well. I think I'm going to have to skip the 22-23 calendar. Something does not look right to me, and I will put that in the board brief for you. I'm going to go on to the 23-24 calendar. There are a few little tweaks that the DEIC decided to look at for next school year, for the following school year. The first one is the early release days prior to major holidays. They're just, they just haven't been as successful as we'd like them to be. We can't get quite enough time with the students in class, and then the teachers don't really have enough time to do any professional development during those half-days. So what we're proposing is that we turn those half-days into full-day teacher planning days, teacher prep days, teacher professional development days. The state of Texas has instituted some new reading academies that we've had to put in to play, and those require a lot of intensive professional development. If we don't have days built into the calendar for teachers to do that professional learning, then we will have to find substitutes for those teachers and pull them out of class. Kids will lose some instruction, and it's, quite honest, very difficult to find subs right now. So we feel that this approach is actually better for everyone. It helps our teachers. It helps our families. It helps our staff. The other slight change that we are looking at is in August, if you look, traditionally, we have started school on a Monday. Kindergarten, pre-K, and first grade teachers cry every day, along with their kids. It's exhausting. They're dealing with children who have not been in school, who don't understand what a school day is, and eight hours is a long time for a baby, especially when they're, when they're transitioning into school. I was a high school teacher. I cried the first week. I know, we know a lot of people who have been on a calendar that has a two- or three-day first-week start. It's very advantageous to try and get everybody back into the swing of things. So in losing those half-days, we had to pick up a little bit of time. So we shifted the calendar a little bit and actually switched the start to a Thursday start. So that first week would be a two-day week. When I presented this to the DEIC, the teachers in the room actually gave us a standing ovation for both of the things. ovation for both of the, of the things. They were mostly elementary teachers. So, we got a lot of very positive feedback from the DEIC on these changes. As I said, I need to go back and look at next year's calendar. I think there are a couple of things we might need to adjust. I will show you Christmas on this calendar. We did have to back it up a little bit because Christmas is the 25th. That's what I need to go back and look at on next year's calendar. Christmas doesn't look right to me and then there's supposed to be an early start next year, so I don't know what happened. I apologize for that. I will have to give you an updated calendar for next year, but that one has been board approved. And so, I'll take any questions for the 23-24 calendar.
Did you say the December dates are wrong on this 24?
I, Ms. Dobbs, I'm going to have to go back and look at that calendar. There, there's something, it shows the early start, but does it show, what does it show for December?
Obviously 11 is the start date.
Okay, it's just the slide.
And the 23rd of Christmas is on Sunday.
So, which is a, an interesting thing. I think that's something that we missed that I need to look at. That means that teachers will get off the day before Christmas, basically. We might get run out of town. So, I'm going to have to look at that for next year, but the start date is in print on, on this slide and I apologize. So, I will look at those things and I will board brief those this week for next year. The action we need to take is first reading, actually, only on the 23-24 calendar. Absolutely.
Just to clarify, the, the students are getting the day off ahead of the week-long breaks or the two-week-long Christmas break and they're making that time up by starting and then the partial week starts a little, a couple days earlier.
That is correct. Yes, sir. The, the half-days, it's really three hours early release is what we've traditionally done. We have extra time built into the calendar, so there's still two days if we have bad weather. We could have up to two days and I'd have to take our bad weather days with this calendar as it stands on its face. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Just to clarify this for 23-24 school year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tier, would you please add this to the consent agenda for the next January meeting? Thank you. Moving on to item 16, consideration of possible approval, update 118 as a first reading. Mr. Geer?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Since Ms. Morsak hogged the podium, I thought I'd come up for a little bit for the exciting part of the presentation. Board, his policy update. So, this is coming to you as a first reading for update 118. It covers recommended local policy revisions to address new laws enacted from the 87th legislature, a regular session which ended on May 31st of 2021, and also incurs changes to TEA's Financial Accountability System Resource Guarantee. First policy, CFD Local, is a policy that governs activity funds management. Changes have been made to the policy to clarify that student activity funds are those monies raised and collected by student clubs and organizations. Approval for spending those funds lies with the student club organization, while the principal sponsor are responsible for managing disbursement. Several bills, including House Bill 1118 and Senate Bill 1267, resulted in revisions to CQB Local on cybersecurity training. Listen for it, here's the good part. The requirement for most employees and board members to complete cybersecurity training annually has been eliminated. Go ahead, you go. That's what I thought. I knew I'd get a little bit of excitement today. Forty minutes of your life I've given back to you. Well, still is you. Now only the district cybersecurity coordinator is actually required by law to receive this training on an annual basis, though the superintendent may require additional employees to complete their training on a schedule determined by the district. So, another reason to stay on Dr. Terry's good side. In accordance with the policy, the superintendent still determines the training program and is now authorized to impose consequences if an employee required to complete the training fails to do so. Lot of power right there. Another revision to this policy was prompted by Senate Bill 1696. In the event of a breach involving student information, it is no longer required that the cybersecurity coordinator be the individual to make the report to TEA and other entities. The new law only requires that the district make the notification, which could now be done by any appropriate employee. The revisions recommended to DFE are guided by recent TEA Commissioner of Education Proposal for Decision. As provided in current law, a contract employee's resignation that is effective at the end of the school year must be filed with the board or the board's designate. The superintendent may not further delegate the authority to receive these, these resignations to another individual. Only the board can designate another employee or additional employees to accept these resignations. To clarify this requirement, DFE Local has been revised to give the superintendent or the other person designated by board action the authority to accept these resignations from contracted employees. The board can designate additional employees through a board resolution. If a contracted employee provides a resignation to a supervisor that's not designated by the board to accept the resignation, new policy language requires the supervisor to instruct the employee to submit the resignation to the appropriate person or to the superintendent as designated by board action. Because the proposal for decision only addressed the acceptance of resignations for contracted employees, superintendent may still designate other administrators to accept resignations Senate Bill 179 requires the school board to adopt policy requiring a school counselor to spend at least 80% of total work time on duties that are components of a comprehensive school counseling program. The policy must also provide a specific process if the board determines that our district or district, our campus staffing needs prevent a school counselor from spending at least 80% of work time on school program council components. The recommended policy text that DEP Local is drafted to permit the administration rather than the board to make the initial determination about the counselor's job duties. If the board approves that determination, the board will direct the superintendent to develop a revised job description for the counselor that will address the requirements in law. The other revisions to this policy is recommended to streamline the list of principal qualifications. New provisions in EHAA are recommended to address requirements regarding board adoption of human sexuality curriculum materials. House Bill 1525 requires that a district adopt a policy to address this process. The recommended policy follows the steps required in the new law. These steps include board adoption of a resolution to convene the School Health Advisory Council, the SHAC, and require the council to hold public meetings on the curriculum materials before presenting recommendations to the board at a public meeting. The policy also states that the SHAC recommendations must comply with law. After confirmation that the recommendations do meet the standards of law, the board is required to take a record vote on the SHAC recommendations. EHBC recommended changes to this policy include new provisions on accelerated instruction and accelerated learning commit, committees prompted by House Bill 4545. The accelerated learning committees will be responsible for developing education plans for students had an unsatisfactory performance on a third, fifth, or eighth-grade math or reading assessment. The policy text directs parents to the district's grievance policy, FNG, for complaints about an education plan developed by the accelerated learning committee. The policy also explains that parental requests for a student to be assigned to a particular teacher following an unsatisfactory performance on third, fifth, or eighth-grade math or reading assessment will be handled in accordance with administrative procedures. At FL Local, the list of the types of education records has been updated to refer to accelerated learning committees. As a result also of House Bill 4545, outdated provisions on grade advancement testing have been removed from EIE Local. Text regarding accelerated instruction is now addressed in policy EHBC. Other changes to this policy include the removal of texts regarding the assignment of retained students, which was based on administrative code addressing grade advancement testing. The statement about eliminating the practice of retaining students has also been removed as it is only necessary if a district operates an optional extended-year program. House Bill 375 amended the offense of continuous sexual abuse of a young child to include continuous sexual abuse of a disabled individual. The section of policy FDE Local addressing the collection of site-school data has been revised to align with this change in the law. Included in policy FEA Local is a provision permitting a student who is at least 15-years-old to be absent for one day to obtain a learner license and for one day to obtain a driver's license. Senate Bill 289 created this optional excused absence. Given the number of optional excused absences now listed in this policy, the various references about providing verification of these absences have been consolidated into a single statement. House Bill 699 created an exception for the 90% attendance requirement for absences resulting from a serious or life-threatening illness or related treatment. To reflect this exception, recommended text has been included in FEC Local. In addition, this policy has undergone significant reorganization and revision to remove administrative details on documenting student illnesses, which can be addressed in our student handbook, which they are. Changes have also been made to place an emphasis on students' mastery of the essential knowledge and skills in maintaining a passing grade rather than assigning a student to attend programs for amount of time equivalent to the student's absences. Recommended revisions to FFG Local incorporate House Bill 3379, which changed the standard of reporting child abuse or neglect from a cause-to-believe to reasonable cause-to-believe. For further clarification, a reference to the definition of a person responsible for the care, custody, or welfare of a child is also recommended for inclusion in the policy. Lastly, in anticipation of the new professional development policy that must be in place by August of 2022, a reference to district policy has been added to the section that addresses training for employees on preventing and recognizing sexual abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. And that concludes my presentation on update 118. I'd be glad to entertain any questions in this first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Geer. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, do you have other comments?
No, sir. Just if there's no recommendations, we would ask that the board move this into consent for next meeting for a final reading.
If there's no further questions, Ms. Tier, would you please add this to consent agenda for our January 10th meeting, please? We'll move on then to number 17, consideration of possible approval of CW Local as a first reading. Mr. Geer?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Policy CW Local, which addresses naming facilities, has been under review by the district. For clarity purposes, we propose some reorganization of the wording under the section titled nominations. Also, a change is recommended to increase the number of representatives the board will appoint from three to five while removing the appointments by the superintendent. And again, we bring this to you tonight as a first reading.
Any questions from the board? Not here or none. Dr. Terry?
I think we've discussed this policy a little bit and this is an opportunity to really bring some clarity to a, a, a policy that was just a little bit jumbled up and I think it puts the complete authority back in the board's hand as well for moving forward with naming a facility. So, we would recommend if there are no questions or feedback that we'd go ahead and move this again to consent in the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Tier. Would you please add this to our January 10th meeting also? Then number 18, consideration of possible approval of resolution appointing a member of the Kaufman County Central Appraisal District Board. Mr. Chase, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you know, the, the district has the, the privilege of appointing a, a member to the Kaufman Central Appraisal Board and our appointment over the last four years has been Mr. Robert Dobbs and his appointment is actually expires on December 31st of this, this month. And so, we need to take action to, to reappoint somebody in that position. Would point out that Mr. Dobbs is, he's currently serving as the chairman of that board. He's agreed to, to serve another term should it be the, the board's desire to reappoint him. Visited with Ms. Curtis as well, our chief appraiser, and she works with him very well and, and very, respects him very much and, and would be, would welcome the opportunity to work with him for an additional two years. So, our recommendation is, is that we appoint Robert Dobbs to, to another two-year term beginning on January 2022 and it would end in December of 2023, I guess it would be. And so, you have a resolution in your board packet that would, if we, we could put his name on that and the board could approve that, that resolution as, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry?
I concur with Mr. Chase and Mr. Dobbs has done a great job for us over the last few years and would recommend his reappointment.
Any other questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I am looking at the, the, the resolution appointing Mr. Dobbs to Kaufman Central.
Thank you, Ms. Green, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Ferris, I abstain.
Thank you very much, not here or none. Motion passes. Let the minutes reflect that Ms. Dobbs did abstain from the vote. Moving on then to item 19, our closed session. At this time, the board will convene into closed session. It's now 8:29 PM. Closed session will cover 19A, deliberation regarding employment of professional contract personnel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551074, and 9B, consultation with district's legal counsel regarding legal and procedural matters relating to purchase and acquisition of real estate pursuant to Texas Government Code 551071, and 9C, deliberation regarding potential purchase and acquisition of real property Kaufman County, Texas pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551072. Thank you very much. It is now 8:29 and we'll go to closed session. It's now 9:57 and we'll open, back into open session. Moving on to item 20, consider possible approval regarding employment of professional contract personnel. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to board through the application of employment of professional contract personnel and discuss the closed session.
I have a motion by Ms. Dobbs, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not here or none. Number 21, consideration of possible approval of real estate broker to provide services to the district and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract with the broker. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move to approve the superintendent to negotiate a real estate broker.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Andrews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not here or none. That concludes our items. We have some announcements there, as you see. Notice the dates below, December 11th, Fan Fest at Jackson Roads. December 20th begins the Christmas holiday break and then our next meeting will be January the 10th, which is the second. the 10th, which is the second Monday in January, our regular board meeting. Any other announcements or anything? This meeting is adjourned at 9:59.